Tonight, I forgot what day it is, Thursday, July 14th, for our regular called meeting. Well, excuse me, it wasn't even the regular called meeting. This is a special called meeting because of last week, so we'll get situated here. Anyway, we're going to start this evening with a prayer and then invocation. I'm asking Commissioner Booker to lead us in the prayer and Commissioner Rafalski in the pledge, so please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, come before you once again, bow heads and humble heart, thanking you for this day. Thanking you for this community, Heavenly Father. Thanking you for keeping us safe through the pandemic and Heavenly Father, all the challenges that we go through every day. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for watching over our children. Thank you for protecting our first responders, Heavenly Father, as they go toward danger. And Heavenly Father, we ask that you guide us tonight in our decisions, Heavenly Father, that it'll be all of you and none of us. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Due to some presentations we have tonight, could someone ask the two teams to come in, the U-11 and U-14? We're going to move them to the front of the program to acknowledge their success, and then we'll move into the public comment portion. So.
Good-looking bunch we have here. All right, gentlemen, great job on what you've done. Today, we're going to issue a proclamation from the County Commission on your success. This is a proclamation from Glen County for the Glen County Recreation and Parks, eight U All-Star Coach Pitch Baseball 2022 State Champion Celebration Day. Whereas the 2022 Glen County Recreation and Parks Department, eight U All-Star Baseball Team, demonstrated amazing athleticism and determination in competing in the Georgia Recreation and Park Association's All-Star Baseball Tournament in Dalton, Georgia, and as a result, achieved tremendous success. And whereas this team finished the GRPA All-Star Baseball Tournament with a six-and-one record, scoring a total of 91 runs while giving up just 29 to their opponents. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Scott Stepaway, assistant coaches Travis Brooks and Craig Pace, the team won its very first GRPA Class A-B Coach Pitch State Baseball Championship on June 24th, 2022, with exciting back-to-back wins of 11-2, 11-2, and over the city of Jefferson Park Recreation Park's eight U All-Star Baseball Team. And whereas, the Glen County Board of Commissioners wishes to congratulate the players, coaches, and parents for their hard work and dedication in winning the state championship. And whereas, the team has brought honor and pride not only to themselves, but also to Glen County Recreation and Parks Department and the Glen County community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners, that is hereby recognizes the 2022 Glen County eight U Coach Pitch All-Star Players for demonstrating remarkable athletic talent, and the coaches for dedicating their time and enthusiasm to lead this team to the GRPA Class A-B State Baseball Championship, and proclaim this day, July 14th, 2022, as Glen County eight U Baseball Championship Celebration Day in Glen County. In witness, I set my hand upon this on the 14th day of July, 2022. Congratulations, gentlemen.
I've asked the coach to come forward and say a few words, sir.
Hey, how's everybody doing? I don't want to talk long, I just want to say how proud I am of these kids. This did not come easy, it takes a lot of work and effort to do this. And also couldn't have done it without my two other coaches and my great group of parents that I had on this year's All-Star team. We're pretty new down here, we just moved here in January, so it's my first season even being at Glen County Parks. And I think we ended it pretty good. So, they were definitely a dominant team out there. And again, I just want to thank them for everything they gave us, for the coaches. For, I mean, I had a little hospital stint and some other guys stepped up and helped out when I was in there. And it was really a team effort all the way around, so I just want to thank everybody and just congratulate them one more time.
All right, we have the U-14 baseball team. If you guys also line up across the front, come in and line up across the front. Yeah, just start at the very end and come across the front. All right, gentlemen, this is a proclamation of the Glen County Recreation and Parks, 14 U All-Star Baseball 2022 State Championship Celebration Day. Whereas, the 2022 Glen County Recreation and Parks Department, 14 U All-Star Baseball Team, demonstrated great athleticism and determination in competing in the Georgia Recreation and Park Association's All-Star Baseball Tournament in Augusta, Georgia, and as a result, achieved tremendous success. And whereas, this talented team finished the GRPA All-Star Baseball Tournament with a 7-0 record, scoring a total of 82 runs while giving up just 21 runs to their opponents. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Jason Johnson, assistant coaches Jason Smith, Stephen Hickson, and John Simpson, the team won the GRPA Class A-B State Baseball Championship on June 24th, 2022, with an exciting 13-5 win over Wayne County Parks and Recreation Department's 14 U All-Star Baseball Team. And whereas, the Glen County Board of Commissioners wishes to congratulate the players, coaches, and parents for their hard work and dedication in winning the state championship. And whereas, the team has brought honor and pride not only to themselves, but also to the Glen County Recreation and Parks Department and the Glen County community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners, that is hereby recognizes the 2022 Glen County 14 U Baseball Players for demonstrating tremendous athletic talent, and the coaches for dedicating their time and enthusiasm to lead this team to the GRPA Class A-B State Baseball Championship, and proclaim today, July 14th, 2022, as Glen County 14 U Baseball Championship Celebration. Witness thereof, I set my hand upon this proclamation the 14th day of 2022. Gentlemen.
How's everybody?
I've asked the coach to say a few words.
All right. How's everybody doing tonight? I just want to congratulate the boys on a good run. They, I would say it was tough, but they really made it look easy. I mean, just being honest, the kids played hard. I mean, it's a bunch of kids from different teams that all came together, wanted to win a state championship, and they all rotated, done a team-first approach. And I couldn't be more proud of what they done. You know, they showed up every game, played hard, done great. I appreciate the assistant coaches, two of them's not here, Jason's here. He helped out all of us, put our heads together and tried to do the best we could. And that was it, they done good. I was proud of them.
We'll give everybody a second to clear out before we move forward. All right, thank you, everybody, for that allowing us to go ahead and move the presentations to the front. We'll now begin with the public comment portion of our program. Each speaker who has signed up has five minutes. I'm going to call to the front, first speaker is Maggie Van Campport. Did I pronounce that correct, Maggie? If you would, when you come to the podium, please state your name in five minutes.
Hello, I am Maggie Van Campport with Altamaha Riverkeeper, and Chris Bertrand with Satilla Riverkeeper is here. We're splitting the five minutes. And we don't need very much of your time this evening. We're just here to introduce ourselves to the board. I've met some of you individually in the almost year now that I've been working with the organization. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows we're here and knows how we serve Glen County. Some of you might be very familiar with our organizations, but just in case you're not, we're here just to make sure that you are aware that we're here and that we are here to be an asset to the commission and to the community. So, you might know, Altamaha Riverkeeper was formed about 23 years ago by coastal residents who were concerned about the health of the watershed. And we, our organization is a two-person team as far as paid staff are, so two-person plus our board and the membership that we represent. And we cover a 14,000-square-mile watershed, and it all ends right here at the coast. So, we have a big job to do and a lot of territory to cover. My role with the organization is to cover the coast to the confluence of the Okeechobee and Oconee rivers which form the Altamaha proper, and then all of the tributaries going into the Altamaha. It's a couple of things, specific things, oh, before I move on to that, just so you know, our office, it has moved around over the years in different parts of the watershed, but it is currently here in Brunswick at the WIC 2.0 on the East River. So, I'm not there often, so don't show up at the office expecting me to find, you to find me there at a desk, but you can all reach me anytime at maggie@altamahariverkeeper.org. And a few things that you might be aware that we've worked diligently on lately is, Altamaha Riverkeeper was very vigilant about covering the Golden Ray Incident. And the ship might be gone, but the incident is not forgotten, and we continue to push for Glen County to receive the full benefit of a complete natural resources damage assessment for that, as well as for the LCP Superfund site, along with our other environmental advocate colleagues here in Glen County. We're working towards making sure Glen County gets the benefit of those. And Chris will talk some more about some of the other things we've been monitoring continuously here. And we can, I don't know if you're allowed to do question and answer during this time, but if you have any questions for us, happy to answer any of those.
Hello, everyone, I'm Chris Bertrand, I'm the new Satilla Riverkeeper and Executive Director. So, I spend most of my time actually up near Douglas and Waycross where our offices, at Okefenokee Swamp Park and in Nuhunta and Woodbine, but we also share territory with the Altamaha, we have shared jurisdictions based on where the water flows. So, I also get involved in Glen County. And we're all about keeping that water safe for fishing and swimming so that we can all enjoy it for future generations to come. And then one issue that we've worked on specifically in this area is the Mayor's Point issue, and that's an unpermitted and illegal discharge that's going into the East River, and it's from Patcom slash Ocean Petroleum site. And so, there's petroleum coming off there and dissolved benzines and other kind of nasty chemicals. So, we're making sure that we're following with EPD to make sure that they stop that discharge of these pollutants into the East River, which is unpermitted and illegal, and making sure that they remediate that so there aren't any negative consequences continuously for the East River and the waters around here. But that is my say, and nice to meet you all, and hope to see you again sometime soon.
Thank you very much.
A couple other points on that, just some general in what we do, you know, we're continually permitting, or not permitting, we don't do the permitting, monitoring permits of wastewater treatment facilities or any of the other industries in the area. And we can also be an asset, as I know Glen County is deep in the process of reviewing and updating your zoning ordinances, if you are ever interested in us partnering or being an asset in order to provide model ordinances that can be proposed, that would be, you know, designed to be protective of your watershed. And our purpose as riverkeepers is to ensure drinkable, fishable, swimmable water for all. And we do what we can in a variety of ways to meet those goals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Megan DeRozier. Megan, if you'll come forward, please. Please state your name for the record.
Sure, thank you. My name is Megan DeRozier. I live here in Glen County, am the CEO of an organization here in Glen County called 100 Miles. We do coastal conservation up and down the Georgia coast. And I'm here to address you tonight, and I'm grateful to be able to do that about zoning and the zoning ordinance that you have a draft of that the committee is reviewing. I specifically want to talk to you tonight about this because there's been a lot of attention paid to our organization in the media, and I wanted to stand before you today to set the record straight, because I feel like, you know, you've read it probably and you need to hear from us what's really going on. So, I'll just go back to 2019, when you all launched an effort to receive public comment from residents about our quality of life here in Glen County. I know you received a lot of public comment, and you continue to receive a lot of public comment about zoning and the quality of life and the impacts that zoning might have on our, and does have on our, on our, on our quality of life. But at that time, it was our understanding that the consultant was going to go away, sort through all the comments, and then come back with a draft ordinance that would hopefully address some of the hopes and concerns raised by the community during that public comment period, and the surveys, and, you know, all the input that you received. So, we work up and down the coast, we work on zoning ordinances in all of the counties. Y'all are not the only ones who are redoing their zoning ordinance. And my background is also in land use, and I do a lot of public engagement, and I have through, for almost 22 years. I know from firsthand experience, it is extremely difficult to entice people in a community to provide comments about something that's as wonky and difficult as zoning. And I also know that what usually happens is that when you ask somebody about zoning, they automatically think about their own property and the way that zoning impacts their own property, and that there's nothing wrong with that, that is totally normal and natural. But the bigger impact that zoning has is on things like our road capacity, our sewer and water system, flooding, and other issues that affect all of the shared resources that we all have to live together with in our community. So, back in 2019, when you all launched your effort to collect input, 100 Miles did what the county asked the residents and NGOs and businesses to do, and that is that we encouraged people to participate in that process. We didn't just encourage our members, I wrote letters to the editor, we sent emails, went, made presentations to groups of people that were not just 100 Miles members. And we spread the website and the survey, and, you know, all the things that the county wanted people to do to get public input. We also shared some facts and also our opinions about what we thought might make the community a better place, with the understanding that everybody was doing that. We submitted our input to the consultant, just like everybody was encouraged to do. Some of our input was included in the draft, some of it wasn't. I mean, that's just to be expected. But I'm here today because I want you to know, I want to be crystal clear, that we do not support the draft ordinance as it stands today. But I would never advocate that you throw it out. What this is about is going through a process to get something right. It's about working together to go through a community input session, to review a draft, to revise the draft, to work together, and I know it's hard, it's overwhelming, it's two, almost 200-page document, but we have to do it. I mean, that's what we do, that we have rules and regulations and laws in this community and the state and the federal government, because we need to be governed by something. So, I'm here to ask you tonight to please not throw out the draft. I admit, it's far from perfect, but that's the purpose of reviewing and revising. But just as I'm asking you not to throw out the draft, I'd also like to ask you to change the process for reviewing and revising, because it clearly is not working. So, the people sitting on the committee, we've said before, I've stood up here before, it just needs to be a more diverse group of people. The people are good people, they're working hard, but it needs to include more members that represent different perspectives, maybe people who know about traffic, or sewer and water, or historic preservation, conservation and wildlife. The second really important request I want to make to you tonight is that, you know, again, with all due respect to everybody who sits in the room on Monday evenings, Mr. Rafalski, you especially, me, Susan, Neil Boatright, everybody who goes to those meetings, it's really difficult to go through that ordinance and understand how to do it. We're just regular people, you're just regular people, you're not zoning experts. So, you know, why not have the consultant come back and walk you through it? Facilitate a process for walking you through the ordinance and walking this committee through the ordinance, collecting public input, and making sure that if you want to throw something out, what are the implications for that? Making sure we fully understand the unintended consequences of that. And also making sure that we understand, we don't like this, maybe here are some other options for doing it a little bit differently. Right now, the committee is not equipped to do that, we don't know how to do it, the public doesn't know how to provide input on that kind of thing. My last point is this, and I think it's especially important as it relates especially to the media coverage of 100 Miles. We live in a polarized world. We live in a world where people want to believe in conspiracy theories, in ulterior motives, and the boogeyman. The polarization is often unfounded and often does nothing but prevent us from working together, prevent good people from sitting in a room together and solving real problems that address our community. So, I just don't want you to fall for it, I'm begging you, please don't fall for it. Glen County zoning ordinance is not a political football, it's not a partisan issue. We have to commit to understanding the ordinance and the implications that it will have on our real world here in our community. And so, I really hope that you will work to diversify the committee, and also please bring a facilitator in to help work through the process. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Our final speaker in the public comment portion is Ms. Angela Favors-Morrell. And if you'll please state your name when you get to the podium for the record.
Good evening. I'm Angela Favors-Morel, and I have laryngitis. Thank you. I'm here today to ask, and I come to you in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I have submitted documentation requesting and asking that the Glen County Court Building please be named after Judge Orrin Douglas. And I'm asking this, whereas Judge Douglas has served with honor and distinction with the state of Georgia, and his vision and unyielding commitment is appreciated by the citizens of this community. And Judge Douglas was admitted to the State Bar of Missouri and Georgia in 1973. I'm not going to read all the accolades because it would take a little longer than five minutes. However, he has practiced law in Glen County community as a general practice trial lawyer for more than 20 years. In 1981, he was appointed by the Brunswick City Council to the position of Judge of the Municipal Court. He served in that capacity for 12 years until November 1992. He was elected Judge of State Court of Glen County, serving for five terms, that's 20 years, and he retired as Chief Judge and later assumed Senior Judge status. He also serves on many panels, advisory boards. It's just numerous names, but I have submitted that information to the Board of Commissioners. But most of all, I come to you today, as many may know and many may not. For more than 20, during the past 20 years, I have filed civil actions filing pro se homeless and indigent. Because the late Judge Alamo, during the deposition, referred to me as a useless blank. And I do have copies of that, excuse me, copies of the pretrial hearing to show that, which was also certified as correct and accurate. I'm not asking you to fill in a blank, but I would like for you to understand that, just like Judge Orrin Douglas has a long list of accolades, Judge Alamo made the statement, made the comment, I didn't have to prove it, but also Judge Alamo apologized. And not only did he apologize, I accepted the apology, and I forgave him. Judge Alamo's name is on the Federal Court Building. And whereas if anyone knew, know, knew him and know of his history, his accolades being a prisoner of war twice, the things that he did as far as prison reform, such as Orrin Douglas worked, and prison reform as well, Judge Alamo has been acknowledged in books, movies, Greyskys, therefore, it, I find it that it would be point blank a shame for me to go before any board and insist that his name be removed from the federal building. However, I take it upon myself on today to stand before you by faith, and I ask, and I have petitioned this board to please consider to name the Glen County Courthouse after the Honorable Judge Orrin Douglas. Thank you so much for your time and patience, and I pray that we're able to make that happen. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Morel. I do want to make one comment real quick. Under our current ordinance, a county building cannot be named after a person. The person must be deceased for at least six months before it can be considered. I agree with you that Judge Douglas is very distinguished and has served this community in a great capacity. I certainly hope he has many more years before we ever have to consider it. But I do appreciate you bringing it forward.
Yes, thank you. The documentation that I received in my application to make this request, it further goes on to say that if a person of the building is named after an individual that's living, if that building should be torn down, removed, rebuilt, then we would have to go through that same process of renaming that building. So I did inquire in reference to that before I submitted that application. But I did see that, and it also stated that for the individual, it must, they must be deceased for that particular time, and then you're also required to receive permission from the deceased family. But when it goes on down to reference the living person, it does not say anything except for submit a bio if you have one.
I, I think we can all agree, we are very appreciative of Judge Douglas and what he's done, and he would certainly, at the appropriate time, might be considered for such an honor. But thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Okay, thank you.
I want to acknowledge that Commissioner Fendig is here attending the meeting tonight virtually. He has an illness. He will be here to observe and comment, but he will not be voting. So at this time, gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda for General Business and Finance, with the exception of any items that any commissioner would like to, would pull back.
And Mr. Chairman, I do so make that motion to approve the consent agenda for General Business and Finance.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, General Business and Finance. We have a second. Do we have any items anyone wishes to pull? Any further discussion? If not all in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes 5-0. We'll move now to our next item. Our public hearing, land use, item number 39. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process is appreciated. Item number 39, ZM 5052, Burns Track Rezone. Request for approval of rezone of approximately 22.4 acres located at 112 and 116 Burns Landing. Parcel number 04-09475, Robert Burns, Jr. Owner. 113 Burns Landing, parcel number 0410215, Alan A. Burns III, Owner. 117 Burns Landing, parcel number 0410467, Robert C. Burns, Jr., Owner. 123 Burns Landing, parcel number 04-10241, William B. Burns, Owner. 129 Burns Landing, parcel number 0410466, Terry B. Smith, Owner. 134 and 180 Burns Landing, parcel number 0400219, Beverly B. Burns, Owner. 135 Burns Landing, 04 dash zero, excuse me, 04 dash 10468, Lee B. Lane, Owner. 139 Burns Landing, parcel number 04 dash 10242, Catherine Petrie, Owner. 145 Burns Landing, parcel number 0410238, Michael B. Covington, Owner. 151 Burns Landing, parcel number 0410239, Alan's, Alan Burns III, Owner. 154 Burns Landing, parcel number 0400222, Douglas Carroll Lane and Lee B. Lane. 167 Burns Landing, parcel number 04 dash 00211, I'm sorry, 04 dash 00221, Angela Evan Burns, Life Estate, and Alan Burns III, and Gloria Burns, Owner. And 181 Burns Landing, 04 dash 10465, Oscar B. Covington Jr., Life Estate, and Zoann B. Covington, Owners. From, from Forest Agriculture, FA, zoning district to R21 Family Residential Zoning District, the proposed use is one-family residential with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. Ms. Leith.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leith, Planning Manager. This is ZM 5052, the Burns Track Rezone. As, as the chairman stated, there's multiple parcels, multiple owners that join together for this application. So they are looking to rezone the properties from Forest Agricultural to R21 Family Residential. Currently, the zoning of Forest Agricultural does allow a 20,000-square-foot lot and numerous uses. So single-family homes are permitted on FA as well as R20. The zoning district they're looking to rezone to is also a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size. The reason for the applicant's request, as they stated in the application, is that the draft zoning ordinance update that's currently being reviewed does have some language or proposed language regarding a larger lot size for Forest Agricultural, and some other stipulations that the applicants are concerned about that may affect their property. And so they're wishing to rezone to R20 at this point in time because of those concerns. So this is a subject property. It's the north end of St. Simon's Island off of Lawrence. And there are multiple properties out here. There's a few houses on the properties. And here's an aerial view of the property as well. Then here's a survey of such a property. Off of Lawrence Drive, there is not illegal access to these parcels, but these all are, as, as you noted, several, separate parcels. There are a few houses where, we do have the addresses shown here, where there are homes that are on these lots now. And this is just a comparison of the current zoning uses that are allowed in FA, and then what would be allowed in R20. And then this is the, is also in your application, or your packet. The applicant submitted some, some language regarding their concerns and why they're making this request, and they can speak more to that when they come up to the podium. And particularly, this is just an excerpt from this draft V1 that's currently under discussion for the zoning update, just some of the proposed for discussion language. And as we've noted, this is currently still in draft form and has not been approved. So the Islands Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this application on June 21st of 2022. They did vote unanimously to recommend approval with conditions. It was a 4-0 vote with three commissioners absent that night. And the recommended approval with conditions, conditions are, construction is limited to Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that onsite burning is prohibited. And the reason for these conditions to be added were, there were some other projects in the vicinity that had similar conditions added to them in some recent approvals, so the IPC recommended these conditions added. And these are your possible actions and a possible motion. And I'll have to answer any questions, and then the applicants are here as well. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Leith before we begin?
Stephanie, is it not true that in FA, they could zone all those lots R6? They're actually upsizing. And they, they could rezone that whole tract to R6 if they wanted to, correct?
So under the current zoning ordinance, we don't allow rezones, under the currently enacted zoning ordinance, we don't allow rezones to R6 any, any longer on the island. So that would not be an option for them, but they could rezone to an R9.
So it's clear, it's clear they're not really trying to develop this tract of land. They're trying to preserve it.
I do not know what their intentions are. They have not indicated that.
Okay.
Any more questions, Commissioners? If not, if not, we'll begin the public comment portion of the, of this motion, of this rezone. Those who would like to speak against the rezoning, please come forward and state your name for the record. Those who would like to speak against the rezoning of ZM 5052, the Burns Track Rezone, please come forward and state your name for the record. Is there anybody who'd like to speak against? If not, we'll close that portion of public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor, or feels like they need to speak in favor at this point? Please come forward, state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Alan Burns. I live at 167 Burns Landing. We have, there are three family members that are going to speak. We'll be quick, so we won't hold you all up. Thank you this evening for your time to hear this request. This property has been owned by our family since the 1960s. Some of these lots are in third and fourth generation of ownership out there. We've been here a while. Our family's been on the island since 1700s. We are, now we have some of the ones, and one you heard outside yelling, I apologize, is the ninth generation of our family to live on the island. But we're, we are, we are deeply rooted in this property. This property was purchased by my grandfather and my uncle with two houses on it. And actually, the houses are located where the 180 and the 181 are. And that was back in the 60s. In 1965, my uncle built a new house on 180 and demolished the old house. In 1970, my dad built 167. That was the third house on the property. In 1993, my cousin Rob, back over here, built one at 1, excuse me, 112. And that's been our construction history over the years. The northern part of the property was owned by my grandmother, and before she passed, she deeded all of that to each of her grandchildren. So that's why that part is divided up the way it is. Each grandchild has a lot in there from our grandmother. The property to the north, she mentioned, is the former Sinclair plantation, and that is currently zoned, planned development. It was approved by the Planning Commission and County Commission for lots ranging from 7,200 square feet to 20,000 square feet. The property to the south, as was mentioned, is R6, which 6,000 square foot lots or greater. Since zoning existed in this county, we have been FA. We didn't ask for it. We were given it. The property has met all of the FA requirements since zoning existed. The current FA requires 20,000 square feet. The smallest lot you see up on our property is 33,500 square feet. The proposed change to FA would, would require 10-acre lots. All of these lots would become non-conforming, and all of the houses out there would become non-conforming, because residential uses are not permitted in the proposed ordinance in FA. It is not a permitted use. All of our property would be non-conforming. That section of the ordinance, 9.11 of the proposed ordinance, specifically says that it is, will allow them to continue, but will not encourage their survival, where it's directly out of the ordinance. And it goes further to that, to talk more about why it would not survive, and what levels of damage would require it to go away altogether. Four years ago, you approved a comprehensive plan for the county. In that comprehensive plan, our property, the Village Bluff subdivision, and the former Sinclair property was all designated as medium-density residential. FA does not meet that qualification. We are requesting R20, and that is the, your largest single-family zoning district. If you had a larger one, we would ask for it. All lots will be conforming with the current and proposed ordinances. The lot sizes and setbacks match the current FA zoning. There is no increase in density from FA to R20, and this rezoning will restrict the use of the property even further. You don't get many people come before you asking to further restrict the use of the property, and that it'll get rid of all agricultural and commercial uses. In conclusion of my part, we are multiple lots in one-family ownership. In 60-plus years of ownership, we've gone from two homes to four homes. We're really having an impact on the community, hate to say. The county is, has zoned us FA in the original zoning. We have always been a large lot residential subdivision. The restrictions imposed in the proposed ordinance are completely unreasonable. Based on your current comprehensive plan, we are supposed to be residential. We're asking to comply with that. Article 5 of the proposed ordinance lists the intents, and in Forest and Agriculture, they don't, do not intend any residential in there, and is not permitted. In R20, and the listing in that is basically us. It's what we've always been and what we plan to continue. Approval of this request keeps us in compliance with the current ordinance. It will make us in compliance with your current comprehensive plan, and will make the lots in compliance with the proposed ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended this change by unanimous vote, but assumed apparently, as you heard from Stephanie, that we were developing and adding conditions relating as you heard from Stephanie, that we were developing and adding conditions related to burning and noise. We are not developing the property. We just want to continue the way we are. We're not clear-cutting, and we're not mining like our neighbors to the north that those conditions were put in place for. We will follow all normal county regulations as we always have. Please approve the request and allow us continued use of our property that we have over the last 60 years.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Thank you for your time and...
Good evening. My name is Rose Barber, and I live at 180 Burns Landing, which is owned by my grandmother, Beverly Burns. I would first like to explain how our request is in harmony with the character of the neighborhood. The use of our property has been single-family residential for more than six decades. The rezoning request ensures continued residential harmony of this overall tract at a significantly lower density than the adjacent R6 subdivision. Our existing lot sizes range from 3/4 of an acre to five acres. Each of these parcels are much larger than most lots on the island. Our rezoning request also promotes the 2018 Glen County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designation for this tract as medium-density residential. Secondly, I'll explain why our rezoning would not be detrimental to property or persons in the area. The current single-family residential use of our properties will continue as it has for six decades. Although a more dense zoning option would be in compliance with the Glen County Comprehensive Plan for this property, including R9 and R12, we are voluntarily proposing a much lower density of R20. Our request for R20 zoning requires a much larger lot size than the current zoning of parcels, both to our south, R6, and to our north, PD median-density residential. The approved, I'm sorry, the approved and current Sinclair planned development district to our north has a standard lot size of only 13,500 square feet, with many even smaller. The Burns Track is part of the Greater German Village community, and our rezoning is supported by the Village Bluff subdivision as shown in the letter of support that was included in our application. And I do have a copy of that letter here from the Village Bluff Property Owners Association, if you'd like to see it. Next point is the change to R20 will enhance and strengthen the area by preserving the lower density and conformity to our existing homes and lots. And my last two points are, there are currently four single-family homes on four lots that each exceed two acres in size and 10 vacant lots on the subject tract. These vacant lots have existed for nearly four decades when they were given to my great-grandmother, Frances Postel Burns, to her eight grandchildren, including my mother. Our homes and lots have existed in full legal compliance with the current ordinance for six decades. Rezoning to R20 will also bring us into full compliance with the county comprehensive plan. Thank you so much for your time, and I'll turn it over to my cousin Gloria Burns for the rest of the presentation.
Just, I'm going to summarize additional details that support our rezoning request that were not included in the IPC minutes.
Ms. Burns, please state your name for the record.
Oh, Gloria Burns, and I live at 167 Burns Landing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Our family homes and lots, again, as we were saying earlier, are all currently 100% legal and conforming and have been for six decades. They would immediately all become 100% nonconforming in multiple new ways under the proposed changes to the Forest Agricultural District. Although our single-family homes have always been allowed as a permitted use by right in forest agriculture, they are demoted to a limited use in the new draft. A limited use in the draft is the new name for what the county now calls a conditional use. The shortened list of permitted uses in FA includes animal care, a church, a radio tower, a golf course, agriculture, a produce stand, a disaster shelter, timber harvesting, and a park, but no longer single-family homes. FA is now classified in the draft ordinance as a rural district, no longer a residential district, with primary intent to be utilized and reserved for agricultural purposes and to encourage public and recreational areas and agricultural uses. This draft description excludes residential uses. Our land and homes are not in agricultural use. We have not and do not farm and don't intend to start. FA is the only district where dramatic lot size and setback changes have been proposed in the draft. These would increase the minimum lot size, as stated before, by a whopping 2,000% from the current two homes per acre to only one home per 10 acres. Double the minimum lot width from 100 feet to 200 feet, that's a 100% increase. Increase the front yard setback by 250% from 20 to 50 feet. Increase the side and rear yard setbacks by 430% from 7 to 30 feet. And here's a chart that summarizes, and I'll leave up here, that summarizes what you can do in R20 FA currently and what the net changes in the new ordinance under FA. In short, the proposed ordinance will make all of our homes and lots nonconforming immediately. This is important because Section 911 of the draft clearly states the intent of those zoning ordinance to permit nonconformities to continue for a while, but not to encourage their survival. That's harsh language, and that's a serious departure from your current ordinance. There will be no more long-term grandfathering. Section 911 will also not permit the rebuilding of nonconforming structures in the wake of a disaster when damage equals or exceeds 50% or more of assessed value. Basically, this means the new regs will be triggered at only 20% of a home's value. This is a major, major change from our current ordinance that uses market value to set the limit. It would become impossible to rebuild or repair our homes to meet the drastically increased lot standards. We can't create more land, so if we've got 2 and 1/2 acres, we're not going to have 10 acres. Our 2 and 1/2-acre lot, although larger than most lots on the island, would not be anywhere close to that 10-acre minimum. The proposed changes, as recently noted in the zoning review committee, could even make our decades-old homes uninsurable. No Glen County residents should have to live in fear of not only losing their home in a disaster, but also losing everything when not allowed to rebuild on land they have owned, legally conformed, and paid taxes on for six decades. Section 911 also states that nonconforming uses may not be enlarged upon, expanded, nor extended. Despite being fully legal at the time of adoption, homes made nonconforming under the draft ordinance could not be enlarged for accessory uses added. This means we couldn't even add on to our homes to care for older family members so they can age in place. That's very important, as you can see, for our multi-generational family. Why would anyone even want to propose to do that to their fellow citizens? That's a big question that lingers no matter the outcome tonight. In summary, we're not asking to change our land use. Our zoning standards of six decades are being changed on us. We want to emphasize that R20 and FA requirements are the same in the current ordinance as shown in the chart included in our application. That's the chart I have here. Our parcels and homes are in full compliance with both the current and the draft ordinance provisions for R20, which remains unchanged in the draft. Regardless of the status of the zoning and subdivision regulations draft, our zoning request brings us into compliance with the future land use map, which I don't think was shown tonight, of the comprehensive plan, which does classify our properties as medium-density residential, not agricultural. Rezoning our tract to R20 will stop unnecessary stress, bring us into full compliance with your comp plan, future land use map, and more accurately reflect the reality of our property use. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Are there any others who'd like to come forward and speak in favor of this rezoning? You're speaking for the, in favor of the rezoning, is that correct? Okay, just want to be sure.
I just want the Burns to, my name's Neil Boatright, and I am a mainland planning commissioner, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm just a landowner and taxpayer tonight. And my heart goes out for the Burns family, to go through the expense and the stress and the aggravation that we have put them through. As far as I'm concerned, Glen County owes them a big I'm sorry, and we owe them some money for putting them through this stress and aggravation. And when you start talking about generations and generations and generations of family living on one partial of land, it becomes personal, and we are stepping on these folks' toes. Now, it makes me, the only reason why I got up here is because the 100 Miles Advocate brought my name up. I was appointed to the Mainland Planning Commission to be an advocate for property rights, and we are put, we have put this Burns family, you can look at them and tell the anguish that's on their face, guys. This is going to happen to the Boatrights, this is going to happen to the Smiths, this is going to happen to the Joneses, it's going to happen to the Oakwens, it's going to happen to everybody that's in this community because 57% of our property is FA, zoned FA. What is wrong with FA land, guys? It's time to put this to bed and stop this. Now, thank God, the Burns have the financial resources to be here tonight and go through the expense of what they've been through, okay? What's going to happen when a family don't have the funds to do this? Their houses is going to be nonconforming, something bad's going to happen, they're not going to be able to, you know, to move, and that's the unintended consequences and the mass exodus we're going to have from Glen County eventually when this comes to head. So I'm asking you, please, guys, put a stop to this now before it gets out of hand, because this can get out of hand really fast for Glen County and Glen County citizens. Thank you very much. I appreciate every one of you gentlemen. Y'all have a lot of stress and aggravation on you, too, and I know it, and I appreciate it, and thank y'all so much.
This is only speaking in favor of the rezon. You would like to speak in favor of the rezoning and keep it to the topic at hand, correct? Well, it's sort of back and forth here. I don't want any more tit-for-tat. If you, if you want to speak in favor of the rezoning, I'm more than happy to have you come up, but I don't want to get you and Mr. Boatright talking about each other any further.
And I apologize if I offended you by using your name. I just, in fact, I think I said, "You're a good person," so I meant it. So again, I'm here to, I plan to come here tonight to speak in favor of this rezoning. I think this is a great example, like they said, of where the zoning ordinance needs to be revised and the draft falls short. I totally 100% agree. I will also own up to recommending that, you know, in our comments, that, you know, you downzone FA in some places to preserve our traffic capacity and also to preserve our sewer system. I never once said, neither did 100 Miles, that we should downzone, you know, put, require people who only have two acres to have five-acre or 10-acre zoning. But the consultant put it in there that way, and they also didn't allow residential. It was never intended, never came out of our mouth, never came out of a piece of paper that we issued. But it's also why, when I read it, I thought, okay, we have to participate in this process to correct the errors in the draft zoning ordinance, and that process is now being taken away from us. And I undeniably respect their opportunity to rezone their property. I 100% support it. I also 100% support all of the other families that are worried about what the draft zoning ordinance might do for their property, and I would encourage them to come here and talk to you, but I would also encourage them to come to the zoning committee meetings because that's also an outlet that you have provided the community to weigh in. So again, I support the rezoning. I am sorry that this turned into a debate about FA, but it's also a really important illustration of how important the draft is and why it should not be adopted carte blanche and why we should all continue to participate in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Commissioners, are there any comments or questions?
Would you put the motion back up there?
Put the motion back up, Steph. Are you about to read the motion?
Yes, sir.
Can I say one thing real quick?
You may now.
No. To the Burns family, this is a proposed ordinance change. It hasn't been done, and it hasn't been accepted. It was never intended to cause anyone anguish or the kind of anguish that maybe you have gone through as y'all thought through this. So we were not, there's no intention, we're not being, trying to intend that upon anybody. But I do think the process has to be followed through, and at some point, we'll finish this, and some point, this community will have some updated regulations. But the intent has never been to force anyone from their land or cause great consternation. I do think that if there's anything we take from this discussion tonight is there's a lot more discussion that has to happen before any zoning rewrite is ever approved by this committee, this commission or our future commissions. It is very important, and I do appreciate what you're saying, and I do take it hard as we continue down that path. I don't know what the path looks like. I don't know what the end result will look like. The intent was to finish what was started back basically in 2016 with the comprehensive plan that was voted on in 2000, early 2019 in regards to the rewrite. I think as a community, we do need to finish the process and the project, but at the same time, we don't need to, Mr. Boatright, cause people to lose their land or forfeit the opportunity to rebuild when things happen. And that's never been our intent or what we would like to see happen. Having said that, Commissioners, any more comments or questions or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application subject to the following conditions. Construction is limited Monday to Friday, 8 to 5, and onsite burning is prohibited.
Second. All right, we have a motion for the approval of rezon ZM 5052 Burns Track rezoning. Do you have any further discussion? Not, all in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Would y'all like to stay for more, or would y'all just excuse? Please feel free to get up and go.
Leave while you're ahead.
All right, we'll move on to item number 40. Appointments. Consider appointing two citizens to serve on the Glen County Board of Tax Assessors. Term begins August 7th, 2022 and ends August 6th, 2026. Applications were received from Barbara Caples, Kathleen Holler, and Andrea Lawson. Floor is open to nominations.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I offer nominate Andrea Lawson to serve on the tax assessors board.
We have a nomination for Ms. Andrea Lawson. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 5-0. Did I do that out of order?
Nope.
Could have asked for additional nominations, but I think that...
I was going to go straight down the list, I'm sorry. Do I have another nomination for the other position that we're appointing, Commissioners?
Kathleen Haler. Holler.
Have a motion to appoint Ms. Kathleen Holler. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 5-0. Item 41. Consider appointing four citizens to serve on the Marshes of Glen Library Board. Two seats for the unincorporated area of the mainland and two seats for St. Simon's Island. Three terms begin upon appointment and end June 30th, 2025. The unexpired term of Ellen Nisk, unincorporated mainland, begins upon appointment and expires June 30th, 2024. Applications were received from Calista Morton, Jennifer Floyd, Denise Rockovich, Dr. Scott Slieta, and Anna Trapp. Commissioners, I open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Morton, Floyd, Rockovich, and Trapp.
Second. All right, we have on the floor a nomination for the fallen people, Ms. Calista Morton, Ms. Jennifer Floyd, Ms. Denise Rockovich, and Ms. Anna Trapp. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 5-0. Item 42. Consider adopting the revised Glen County evacuation zones for the 2022 hurricane season effective immediately. Mr.
Good evening. Andy Lianza, Glen County EMA Director. I have before you the map that we spoke about at the work session. My report is that I did, in fact, meet with the city commission and had no objections when I gave... when I gave the informational report on the project. The comments were mainly based on how reentry would work back into the county. We've been, I have some hard copies here if you'd like to look at them. But again, this is in reference to the study that the Army Corps of Engineers and Dewberry Engineering and FEMA and GMA briefed us on at the work session. So, um, this is exactly what was presented, and that's what we're bringing to you tonight to, to carry on. Doing research, I have seen that we've had three zones previously. Uh, I can't remember exactly what year, but we're going to move to this, uh, zone for the phased evacuation as we, as we spoke about, if that's what y'all choose to do. Gives us one more tool in the toolbox there.
All right, commissioners, any questions?
I have one, and this is, certainly will support this, but, uh, there was a comment about shelters. Can you explain why we don't have shelters here?
So, um, all right, so shelters are not a bad idea. It's, it's a very good idea. We, we, we should, but we can't, if you look at these zones, if we could pull up possibly the other map, that, that other one that had all the light blue on it, if you don't mind, I'll hand you these. All that is just from a category one. So the MOMM means maximum of the maximums. You never say that a category one, well, it's a baby category one, you have to say it's, you know, maximum of maximums. So, the Red Cross is simply not going to open up a shelter where we know we're going to have a hurricane coming in, and we're going to look at this map and potentially have it, um, the roads cut off to this type of facility. We'd, we'd actually be probably setting up a casualty collection point if we set up something in the wrong place. So what we're doing is we're partnering with the, the Red Cross now, and we're going to take some folks and we're going to figure out the best possible locations for areas of best safe refu, F ref, woo, areas of best safe refuge. That's what we're looking at. So I'm going to come back and give you that information, everything, all of our findings of where the best possible places are for different types of shelters. I believe that we do need a local congregate shelter per se for something like an apartment fire. If we have a complex that goes up, where are we going to put some folks? So we can set up some agreements for that type. Plus, if we have some of these storms that kind of skate off to the, to the side of the coast that don't come in as inland as we thought, we need to have something, you know, potentially ready for them. But, um, this is, there's going to be a lot of information that I'm going to bring you about this. Now, the day, the most dangerous thing that I could say is that, say we open up a shelter and we have to turn people away, or it does take the direct impact if the storm, if the storm takes a, a different turn. So that's for further, um, investigation, and I'll bring you another report on all our findings that we're, and we're going to put a lot of effort into this to identify these locations of best safe refuge. That's the term we'd want to use.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adopt the revised evacuation zones for the 2022 hurricane season.
Second. Have a motion to adopt the 2022 hurricane season evacuation zones. A second, all in favor, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, commissioners. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes unanimously 5-0. Do we have any items for executive session, Mr. Attorney?
We do, Mr. Chairman, we have a property matter to discuss.
All right, I have a motion on the floor to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a move to go into executive session.
For property matters?
Property matters.
Second. Got a motion to go into executive session for property matters, matters, a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned to executive session. We adjourn to executive session.
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have a property matter to discuss.
Do I have a motion on forward to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a move to go into executive session.
For property matters?
Property matters.
Second. Got a motion to go into executive session for property matters, matters, a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We adjourn to executive session.